I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Broadwater, Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rosen.
Here.
Mayor Adal.
Here. We'll have the invocation by Les Jones, Assistant City Attorney, and a pledge of allegiance by Mayor Protem Rosen. Dear Lord, we ask for your presence in these proceedings. May your hand guide the decisions made here this evening for the benefit of all. Amen.
The Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize an outstanding employee who began serving the city as part of the Planning Division and has now made plans of his own to relax and enjoy his retirement. Would Paul Wernquist please come forward? Paul Wernquist has been an integral part of Garden Grove's physical transformation over the past 20 years. His services have played a key role in the development of new projects and redevelopment throughout the city. It is not uncommon to see Paul at the planning counter assisting residents with courtesy and a willingness to serve. On December 14th, 1987, Paul was hired as a full-time administrative intern for the city's Planning Division. Less than a year later, he was promoted to Development Services Analyst and served as such for three years. During this three-year tenure in the Building Division, he issued over 3,000 building permits, ranging from patio covers to tenant improvements to large-scale development projects. In 1991, he became an assistant planner. His familiarity with building codes proved to be beneficial in allowing him to quickly rise through the ranks to consequently become an associate planner. Paul's experience in the field eased projects, including the Trousq Avenue widening project and the urban design roulette exercise in 1994 for Harbor Boulevard. His expertise has been repeatedly sought after to provide reviews for environmental-related documents from adjoining cities, the County of Orange, and other governmental agencies. Paul also participated in the 1995 General Plan Update as well as the present General Plan Update. Paul's vast knowledge of planning services has earned him the esteemed title of guru. He has long been a resource for his coworkers and has never shied away from offering a helping hand. Since 1999, he has been an urban planner in the Building Services Division of the Community Development Department. Paul has meticulously administered over 350 land use cases, which include site plans, conditional use permits, variances, general plan, zoning, code amendments, parcel maps, tentative tract maps, and other related land use matters. Paul puts forth 100 percent when working on any project, small or large. Riverwalk was a special project that was processed through entitlements but unfortunately never implemented. To this day, however, it is still his favorite project. Part of the reason Paul knows the city of Garden Grove as well as he does might be due to the fact that he was born and raised in Garden Grove. He was a student at Parkview Elementary School and Santiago High School. Paul has not only seen his hometown progress but is proud that he has been directly involved in that growth. On a personal note, Los Sanchez Restaurant will especially miss Senior Bob, as they fondly call him, for his twice-weekly visits have contributed greatly to their success. And all these trips to Los Sanchez have convinced him to relocate south of the border to sunny Cabo San Lucas, where he will spend his days sailing, fishing, and drinking cerveza. You know, kind of like his life here in Newport Bay, anyway. After all, how many other employees can say they start their morning by rowing their dinghy into shore before actually climbing into their car for work? And as manager and director for the past five years, I will also miss Paul, for I have come to rely on his expert knowledge of the code, his keen sense of humor, and his easygoing approach to work and life. Paul, at this time, the mayor and city council would like to acknowledge the 20 exceptional years of service you have provided the city and present you with a memento to commemorate this occasion. The city of Garden Grove wishes you the best as you bring your plans of retirement to fruition.
Come forward, please, Bob.
Thank you very much, and I'll miss all of you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, now, open oral communications for the agency and the sanitary district. And council, of course.
Accept the public hearing item for the sand district.
Yeah, those will hold for the public hearing. Okay, Bob Owens.
Yeah, I want to comment what that guy said, but we had an art meeting last, I guess, that's Tuesday, Janet, Diane showed up. The other one didn't. She said she had a previous meeting. You believe that? She had a meeting, she couldn't show up. Yeah, uh-huh, sure, we believe that. But she showed up, took all the card questions, all the hits, did a good job. But the other one didn't. She didn't have a meeting. If you don't believe me, she had a meeting. She didn't want to face tough questions. Now, you wrote a piece in the paper about the Cincinnati Garden Grove, and the rebate checks should come and spend the money in Garden Grove. I agree with you, okay? But what's the Chamber of Commerce doing to meet the consumer halfway? I don't know who the Chamber of Commerce is. They don't sell themselves. You don't know what's what. You don't know what services they got. You know, they're clandestine over there on Main Street, and they'll offer, but that ain't getting it. And your sales tax are going down. There's a lot of money going out. Guy told me, a lot of money going out, especially on the West End. You know, that if they were a little more compensable to the citizen and get themselves down in that part, you know, that layer, maybe you have a lot more people buying in Garden Grove. A lot of people would be buying in Garden Grove. But, hey, the Chamber of Commerce is kind of aloof, you know? They only, they meet with the same people in the mixers. Same people. You want to go there, you got the same people you're meeting all the time. Same stories. But you ain't getting the people to spend the money. Now, this guy's telling you about the economy and it going down and the housing. Yeah, the '90s has started. We lost a bunch of defense bases. We lost a bunch of federal money. You know why? We had a lousy Congress. California's got one-third of the Congress. One-third! And they can't get nothing passed without California delegation. And we had the lousiest delegation to protect our federal dollars than anybody in the country. That's why we lost all those jobs. Now, these home prices, you know, it's strange. Nobody knows how it happened. Nobody around did it. They're jacking these homes up. And these mortgages, these speculators, and these banks, nobody went to jail. You can't, I don't know who did it, or maybe the guy down there, you know? That just run in our economy, stripped our jobs, stripped them with these trade packs, stripped the industrial base. I want to talk about the two candidates, then I'll let you go. You got one candidate, McCain. You can't question his patriotism. They question his age. You know, pretty old going into the White House, taking all that pressure, you know? Question his health, mental health, so forth. He got some crazy bulldog preacher, you know, comes up and says, "God brought Hitler back to put all the Jewish people in Israel." Bang! That was one, huh? This guy got mass television. Now, the second one, when Obama ran, you can bet that they got Jesse Jackson and this guy, what's his name?
Al Sharpton.
Yeah, probably got more brains than the rest of them. And he said, "Don't play the race card. Let somebody else play it, but not come from us," right? Okay, so he starts off, and he comes in on a 45-degree angle. He, you know, he obsess Hillary, right? She's got a deadpan, this guy comes in. And he's surrounded with whites, smart whites, that got him in there, went to Chicago in '85. He was looking for the civil rights movement, it already happened. But he's a good community organizer, okay? So, they have him run. What happens? What happens? His own minister, that man baptized him, or baptized his kids, whatever, so forth, his mentor, blew his mufflers, huh? Blowed mufflers on race. And if you take his speech in a whole, what he's saying is that the white population of the United States was practicing genocide on the African-American. That's what he said. But let's go back a little bit. Let's examine this guy. He's 68 years old. He was born, probably, what, 1940? That means he had to get out of high school in 1957. He did six years in Marine Corps. He got out in 1963. Follow his work record. He never worked hard. He preached. All the time preached. He said that the white population brought drugs in. They didn't bring them to Chicago. The mafia brought them in in the '50s. Now, if you would say, and let's just say, that if we had the white population, we had 20 percent, 30 percent that were racist, we still couldn't do what he said. We're not organized. Wait a minute, we're not, wait a minute.
I'm giving you a little extra time.
We're not organized!
I'll give you a little extra.
Okay? But why did he do that? Why did this guy do that? Why would he blow him out of the water like that? Don't make sense, does it? You know the reason? He was jealous. The mentor turned on the student. Oh, people say, "They don't do that." The hell they don't do that! A guy that will teach you will turn on you if you don't come back to him. This guy turned on him! Then he made the same speech at the NAACP!
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Robin Marcario.
Well, that's a hard act to follow. The big booming voice, Bob. I'm Robin Marcario. I just wanted to, one, commend the Strawberry Festival Committee for 50 years of wonderful service in getting to our community. It was nice to see our entire city council in the parade. Thank you, it was really great to see you out there. It's a wonderful festival here in Garden Grove. It promotes our city. It's the best way in which our nonprofits can actually earn some money here in Garden Grove, and I just wanted to say that was a great festival, a great weekend. The other thing I'd like to bring up is that this Thursday, we've all received this flyer in the mail. It's very important that you come down and give your input. This is for the general plan. It's like a blueprint for the next 10 years for what will be happening in our city. It's this Thursday, May the 29th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. here at the Community Center. They're going to have a two-part community workshop. You'll have the opportunity to hear what is in fact being planned or being considered, and there's also going to be an opportunity for an informal open house where everyone, the residents and business owners that do come down, can ask questions, learn more about the elements of the general plan, and to give some input. This general plan will be dealing with our land use as well as some of our community design, traffic, circulation, parks, and recreation. So it is very, very important for you to come on down this Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00 and let our city know what you want for the next 10 years in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought it was going to be a public hearing separate and apart, so I'm just doing the oral communications. I wanted to speak on both oral communications.
This is the regular oral communications. We will have a...
I can speak on that later, correct?
Yes, yes, great. Public hearing for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I'm the current co-president of the Pacifica Quarterback Club, our booster club for the football program. I did get a chance to look at the grand jury report. The only problem, I think, with that grand jury report is I didn't see where they contacted any of the nonprofit organizations to get their input on what ideas may be having for alternative types of fundraising. So I think the grand jury is deficient, although I see the reading of the recommendations. They're deficient in the fact that they didn't contact the nonprofit organizations, and if they did, it's not in the report. Second, I think we need to start talking about districts again under general law. Some of the issues that we've had lately are soft issues. Recognition of some flag from another country, another resolution keeping commies out, another resolution to protect commies that are practicing some type of yoga, I guess, that we're spending our time on. So I think we need to get back to representation in the city of Garden Grove, and I believe districts is the way to do it. And I understand Janet Nguyen and Deana Nguyen both agree on the fact that we don't need districts in Garden Grove. So that's something you folks have in common, but I question on why you don't want districts in Garden Grove. You're running for a district seat for the county, but you don't want districts in Garden Grove seems rather hypocritical. I think you need to revisit the reasons why we want districts in our city, especially having lived in the city as long as I have, and I know you just, from what I hear, from a West Minister Councilman, you just moved in yourself to Garden Grove so welcome. And on the third item, number three, again, getting to our community, the northeast corner of Lamson and Springdale. Anybody's been there, probably noticed how barren it's been for the last several years, the northeast corner of Lamson and Springdale. Quite a few people out in the West End have talked about it and talked about it and talked about it, but it's still barren. It's the northeast corner of Lamson and Springdale. Take a look at that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm from City Council. My name is David Vell. I'm the president of the Garden Grove Chapter of ARP, and I want to thank you, Deana, for showing up. Otherwise, we might not have had a very good program, but you did a very good job, and you explained a lot of things. And I'm sure that you picked up a lot of votes that the other people probably lost for not coming. But what I'm really here for today, that grand jury report that I brought up the last time I was here, 14 pages, and this was supposedly sent out, all the mayors, all the mayors were supposed to show this to their city councils, and they were supposed to respond. This 14-page grand jury report was sent to the mayors of the five cities in Orange County that promote the sale of fireworks. They were asked to respond and to submit these responses to the presiding judge of the Superior Court. This 14-page report clearly explains how dangerous fireworks are. The report wants to hear from the mayors of these city councils on why they are putting the health and safety of their city at risk on the fourth, when it could easily be happy, safe, and joyous holiday for them and the community. Our seniors that have feared for their health and safety over the years would also like to hear what the justification is for continuing these sales. Of course, this has been our contention from the very beginning. All that we want to hear is what is the justification? Because we want to know, can you really justify hurting these people? Because there are people that are hurt, and the reason they're hurt is because they live in these war zones. And I know that, like I said before, and I'll keep on saying it, I don't live in that war zone. I know that you people, though, they don't live in the wars. If you don't live in the wars, you don't understand their problem. And I do understand their problem, because what we've had with this one guy that used to come to our meeting, he came with a tank, you know, and this is how he was breathing, otherwise he couldn't breathe. He had difficulty when these fireworks went off in his area, because his area was very heavily congested. And again, unfortunately, many of our long-term seniors that have lived in Garden Grove 50 years and longer, that had enjoyed and remembered the good old days, have passed away, and this report, unfortunately, is a little bit too late to help them. And you've had several of our members that belonged, believe it or not, to our chapter, that came here, and they told you what their problems were. But I know sometimes it's kind of hard to believe. It's kind of hard to believe if you're not experiencing these things. And I know that when I look at my life, and I look at all the places in the world that I've been, and I've seen with some of the poverty and some of the problems that some of these people have, I do have compassion for these people, and I do have compassion especially for some of our seniors. Some of our seniors really suffer on the Fourth of July, and I know that a few people really understood what they're going through. And some of these charities that profit from these fireworks, if they really understood what some of these people are going through, you might have a little bit more compassion, you might have a little bit more understanding, you might really want to help with some of these people. But again, all I can say is, please, if you have not issued this 14-page report, it's very, it explains everything very thoroughly. If you have not shared this with the other city council members, please do so. Give them this report. Let them read it for themselves. Let them make the decision. And I would really, our membership would really like to hear what your outcome of this, what you really think about it. And if you are still in favor of keeping these fireworks, so be it. But the thing is this, we've got to know. It's, the thing is this, a lot of these people, that if you don't give them some explanation, they are not going to want to vote for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not here for the trash now, right?
Right.
Okay. Well, basically, I'm here for, I guess it's 7G, and it's that, I'm calling it a refinancing or a restructuring of a loan that was issued to the city in 1997. The only thing is, I read a little bit of information on it, but I'm just kind of curious as to, it was taken out for a 13-point-something million dollars in 1997, and it was restructured again about two years later at 12 million and something, and now we're down to 9 million and something. Now, the way I figure it out myself is, to get to that figure, we've been paying the minimum we could pay every year. It says here, you could pay somewhere between 460 and 1.2 million dollars a year. Well, if you multiply out the numbers, we've never paid anything except the minimum, plus the interest payments twice a year. But there's no figure here, how much interest have we paid? How much money have we actually already paid out on 13.9 million dollars, and we still owe 9-point-something million? Now, I and all of you have, are happy homeowners and parents and family members, and we've all gone through that little financial crisis where you refinance and restructure, and you're going to lead the straight and narrow. And you know yourself, five years later, you're back to where you were before, only you have a higher mortgage, and you're paying restarted all over with your interest. We're going to be starting all over with interest again on this. So, but how much money have we already paid out on this money? We've got to get to the point when we take out a loan, as a city or an individual, you pay off the money. You don't just keep paying more and more interest every year, because we're starting all over again. And a year and a half ago, we were told we were in danger of being 6 million dollars in a shortfall. Well, I'm sure we've paid more than 6 million dollars in interest already on this loan, and we're refinancing it again for an indefinite period of time. I mean, it just kind of makes me wonder, where does the money go? We're supposedly making millions of dollars on the, I was just over at the other meeting, on our TOT bed tax and all that. Where's it going if it's not paying off the indebtedness we've already accumulated through the city? We can't just keep refinancing things whenever they come finally do. Somewhere along the line, we have to say, "Stop spending and start paying." I mean, it's a hard lesson to learn as a homeowner, when your kids come up to you and say they want a new bike, and you say, "No, I can't pay it because I have to pay my bills." Well, we as a city should do the same thing. But also, I want to say thank you very much for different activities that I've been participating in the city, that different things that are paid for, like he was mentioning, education things and things that we as citizens take advantage of. I do know a lot of money is spent on things like that, but I, as a person, I don't spend money on entertainment and extracurriculars until I pay all my bills. So I'm just kind of curious how much the total monies we've paid out on this so far, and we're going to refinance it again. Why? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pardon me? Waste disposal we're talking about now?
No, no. If you, I'll call you when I call the rest for that then.
Good evening, all. I apologize. Last time, two weeks ago, when I was up here, I brought a problem up on my curb, being graffiti'd, and I didn't give you the full facts. And so, and I was told by a special person that I didn't tell all. I need to tell all. So I'm here to tell the part that I left off, but I'll also bring you up today. The curb had been painted with a number, a street number of my house, and because I did not patronize the person, I didn't want the curb painted, because the original numbers were still clear, and this person came along, and because I didn't want to give him the eight bucks, they came along and graffitied over the numbers that were on the curb. And I had asked the question to the city whether these people were permitted or they received special approval to go out and do this, since they were doing it on public property, and didn't they have to get a city approval? Well, I never got an answer on that. But anyway, after the graffiti, I called the police. They made a report. The city works department came out, followed, a couple days later, informed me that they would put a work ticket out on it to fix the problem. Well, that was, what, three, four weeks ago? Yesterday, a friend of mine had a stencil to paint his curb, and he came over and offered to help me paint my curb, and so we did. So the work order's not necessary. We did correct the problem. But I still want to know, do these people have to go out and get a permit to do that? I'm sure they have to have some kind of approval by the city. They can't just come along there and do something, and then they're supposed to, I know all the other times, if they want to, if they do it, they're not supposed to retaliate and damage it. Well, they did. The other thing, I'm duty-honor country. Bob got up here and really emphasized the real problem, the real problem that we, the people of the United States of America, have. We're going into tanks faster than we like, not only financially, but we have discrimination just floundering over the top of the table. They're going from left to right, right to left, top to bottom, and it's damaging. It's very damaging for all of us. Let's put our heads and let's start working for the people. For the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Harry Pierce, and I live at 12752 Crestwood Circle, Garden Grove, California. My wife bought a Prius. Now, I'm not here to advocate Priuses or sell Priuses, but stay with me here, there's a little logic here. The Prius is a hybrid, as you know, and it has a little engine, and it has electric drive in it, powered by a battery. And when you drive down the street, it can use both, and it's a little brain in there that figures out which it needs, and so does it. When you step on the brake pedal, the motors convert to generators, can make electricity off of the momentum of the car, puts it back into the battery. When you come to the stop, the stop signal, the thing quits, and it's kind of unnerving the first time you go, because the engine is just not there. You go to go, you push the accelerator down, and the car moves off, and the engine starts. And all the time you're sitting there, the car is not burning any gas. Effectively, and when you stop the car, as you know, the physics of the thing is, when you accelerate the car, it costs you energy, and when you stop the car, it costs you energy. She has, with this contraption, virtually eliminated penalty that most of us have Um, she has with this contraption, uh, virtually eliminated, uh, penalty that most of us have for stopping at, uh, traffic signals or stop signs. Uh, she gets 41 miles to the gallon. I drive a Saturn, uh, and, um, I get a pri, it's about the same sized car and I get 26 miles to the gallon. At $4 a gallon, here's where we're going with all this, at $4 a gallon, her cost for driving is just under nine cents, uh, just under 10 cents a mile. Mine is more like 16 cents a mile. And if I can eliminate the penalty that she has by, um, uh, eliminating stops, my mileage might also, uh, improve to, to approaching hers. Well, complete elimination of such a thing is not possible, but maybe we could cut it down, maybe say by half. If so, my cost would drop to 13 cents a mile, that's about a 20% reduction. My cost, effective cost for gas would drop from $4 a gallon to 324 and that's where I'm going with this thing. There is a way, maybe not to eliminate it all, but if we coordinated the traffic signals on our stoplights, uh, we could eliminate an awful lot of stops and save a lot of people a lot of gas. And, um, that's what, um, I'm here to advocate. If I was king of the world, I'd spend less money on concerts in the park and more money on, on coordinating the traffic signals. Now, I figure this, to address the city council about this because we're the people who put in the, um, traffic signals along, uh, it, within our city. Uh, maybe there's some Measure M money or some state highway, or maybe we could ask Congresswoman Sanchez for a, uh, an earmark, that's, uh, popular today. But at any rate, I would ask that we give, uh, some serious consideration to coordinating the traffic signals and eliminate the frustration and the needless expense of, uh, of stop-and-go driving. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close our communications and recess the council and we'll go to, uh, Councilwoman Winn and the agency business.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we, we're checking on, uh, an agency item very quickly to see if, uh, it was a noticed hearing or not, so if you can give us just a second. Otherwise, we can go to the Sand District agenda.
Well, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay.
We'll recess for five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
How are you?
Thank you.
Nothing celebrates the Fourth of July like fireworks, but the Garden Grove Police and Fire Departments want you to do it safely. If you don't, it's going to cost you. The city will be fining violators $1,000 for using illegal fireworks. That's anything that isn't approved as safe and sane by the State Fire Marshal. There are lots of reasons to celebrate legally, now there are a thousand more. Let's keep Garden Grove safe on the Fourth of July. Fifty years of fun and giving, that's the theme of this year's Strawberry Festival. Join us for all the fun this Memorial Day weekend, from a star-studded parade to exciting carnival rides and yummy food, including lots of strawberries. During its half-century run, the festival put nearly $5 billion in the pockets of local charities. It's fun and for a good cause. Remember the dates, May 23rd through the 26th in the heart of Garden Grove. We'll see you there.
Uh, consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 4A through 4E be acted on time simultaneously unless a separate discussion or actions requested by a council member.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion if there's none pulled.
Um, move the consent items. Second.
Have motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, public hearings, 5A.
Mr. Mayor, uh, the public hearing is to consider amending, um, the municipal code to allow motorcycle sales in the M1 industrial zone and approve a conditional use permit. And Susan Emery is here to give a brief staff report on this item.
Paul?
Paul's last, uh...
I thought he retired at the beginning of this night. See, we brought him back and at half price. No, actually, he's not getting anything either.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is a proposal by a current business owner and property owner, uh, in the city to amend Title IX of the municipal code to allow motorcycle sales in the M1 zone with the approval of a conditional use permit. Motor vehicle sales are currently permitted in the C2 and C3 zones with the approval of a conditional use permit. The category of motor vehicle sales encompasses all forms of vehicles licensed by the State Department of Motor Vehicles, including cars, trucks, motorcycles, buses, and boats. Uh, the request before you this evening proposes to expand motorcycle sales into the M1 zone. The CUP, uh, procedure will allow the hearing body to review any applications for motorcycle dealerships and to ensure compatibility and minimize conflicts between the uses in the area. Uh, the planning commission at their May 1st, 2008 meeting, uh, recommended approval of this amendment. They also provisionally approved a conditional use permit to allow motorcycle sales at 11852 Western Avenue. Um, the planning commission recommends that the city council adopt a negative declaration and introduce ordinance for first reading approving amendment number A13708.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, if none, I'll open a public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
May I introduce the ordinance, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's the ordinance of the city council, City of Garden Grove, adopting a negative declaration and approving a code amendment, number 1A137-08, an amendment to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to allow motorcycle sales in the M1 limited industrial zone with approval of a conditional use permit.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
And thank you for your 20 years of service to the city.
Yes. And you're still not getting paid for tonight. Okay, uh, let's see, 6A, commission matters, committee matters?
Yes, I'd like Keith Jones to, uh, make a presentation on this recommendation from the Traffic Commission.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, staff received a request to install an always-stop at the intersection of Flower Street and Central Avenue. Uh, the areas concerned, uh, potential of potential accidents at the intersection due to narrow streets and lack of sight distance, this, uh, an always-stop study, uh, was conducted and the intersection does meet all the warrants to install an always-stop. The stop sign study was presented in May 6th, 2008, a traffic commission meeting and they approved the always-stop. The, uh, council has therefore recommended that they approve the recommendation of the Traffic Commission and install an always-stop at the intersection of Flower Street and Central Avenue. This completes my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Have motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
That is for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, 7A is a request to purchase, uh, 340 desktop, uh, computers and Charles Kalil is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mayor, members of the city council, we are here to seek council authorization to purchase up to 300 replacement desktop personal computers. In the past, city desktop personal computers have been purchased with a three-year warranty and have been replaced upon warranty expiration. However, four-year warranties were purchased for 220 of the 340 PCs which IT staff is currently requesting replacement. This was done to evaluate the possibility of extending the life of city computers as a cost, um, savings. Due to an increase in repairs during the fourth year, evaluation of the city computers showed that extending the life resulted in both a loss of productivity as well as an increase in the need for internal technical support from IT staff. It also resulted in a level of obsolescence that prevented, prevented the installation of current security patches. Considering the loss of productivity and obsolescence, obsolescence issues, IT staff recommends that the city continue to replace computers every three years. IT staff submitted a requisition to purchase 340 computers and in response to this request, purchasing staff issued and advertised an RFP on March 7th, 2008. Proposals were mailed to 53 vendors. Ten proposals were received and opened on April 3rd, 2008. The source selection committee review scores were completed on May 13th, 2008. The source selection committee unanimously voted for Prycon Enterprise Technologies based on the quality of the equipment and the proposed service plan. It is recommended that city council authorize the finance director to issue a purchase order in the amount of $296,532.70 to Prycon Enterprise Technologies for the purchase of up to 340 desktop personal computers. This completes the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Yes. Well, what happened to the old computers?
Uh, the first thing we, we use the old computers for is to, uh, meet any needs in city hall. We, for instance, we have a, a lab where we do training and we use, uh, 24 computers in that lab and we need to replace those. We also use, uh, computers where we have needs where we haven't funded for the purchase of new computers. Um, we also use many of the computers, uh, for spare parts on some of the older computers as they break down. After that, all those needs have been, um, met, then the computers are then made available for sale, uh, to city staff.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, no further questions, I'll entertain a motion. Move approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
7B.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, 7B is in agreement with, uh, Dwayne Kaluka for the acquisition of property on Thackeray. This is in, uh, connection with the proposed second hotel next to the Sheraton and, uh...
Well, can, can I have a question first? Where's the Thackeray Drive? Just so I know if I am in that vicinity.
Thackeray is a, a small street just behind the Sheraton. It, it deadends at the Sheraton Hotel, so there's some homes along Thackeray, uh, that we had to, when we could not acquire...
I got it. Thank you.
So, and very quickly, if Cardwell can, uh, give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the city council, good evening. It's requested that the city consider the acquisition of real property located at 12281 Thackeray Drive. The property is owned by Alfred E. Kazoka and Lilian J. Kazoka, trustees of the Alfred E. Kazoka and Lilian J. Kazoka Trust Agreement of April 25, 1997. The property is improved with a 1,001 square foot, single-family residence on 7,200 square feet of land. The property is located adjacent to a larger redevelopment site situated along Harbor Boulevard. The acquisition of the subject property is urgent as the Sam, Kang Sam Company is under time constraints for Marriott to begin the development of the Spring Hill Suites Hotel. The acquisition consultant initiated contact with Dwayne Kazoka, son and successor trustee, who confirmed the death of the owners and the legal battle over the estate. The trust agreement provides that the first successor trustee, Ronald Kazoka, convey the property to Dwayne Kazoka, the second successor trustee, following the death of the last surviving trustee. However, Ronald Kazoka has not conveyed the subject property to Dwayne Kazoka as they are disputing the estate. Dwayne Kazoka anticipates the legal disputes over the estate among the successor trustees to be resolved in a matter of weeks. Due to the urgency of this acquisition and based on the foregoing, the city should open an escrow on the subject property contingent on the fact that Dwayne Kazoka holds clear fee title to the property prior to the close of escrow. If Dwayne Kazoka cannot produce clear fee title prior to the close of escrow, the escrow period may be extended until such title is obtained. In anticipation of conveyance of the property to Dwayne Kazoka, an agreement has been reached with him to inquire fee title interests of 12281 Thackeray Drive. The agreed upon purchase price of $510,000 has been determined to be per market value by an independent appraiser. The acquisition of the property will be paid with allocated community development block grant funds. The purchase of the property will improve the city's economic base through the development of tax generating uses where appropriate. And so at this time, staff recommends the following: to approve the acquisition of the subject property, to authorize the city manager and the city clerk to execute the pertinent documents on behalf of the city, to authorize the finance officer to draw a warrant in the amount of $510,000 when appropriate to do so, and to authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute agreements for asbestos testing, asbestos abatement, and demolition at the lowest responsible bids. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff is available to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Any questions?
The property is the one in grain?
Correct. It should say pending.
Okay. Now, if, uh, this dispute between Ronald and Dwayne gets extended, are we obliged to keep the escrow open the whole time or is there at some point where we can, uh, drop out of escrow?
Uh, we can cancel the escrow at any time. The, uh, agreement allows, gives us that freedom to cancel escrow at... The agreement allows, gives us that freedom to cancel escrow at any point if the disputes won't be resolved.
Okay.
Okay, the spelling is under 7B, that's just a typo, correct? It says Kaulka, K-A-U-L-K-A, and there's supposed to be an S in there, right?
Correct, an S.
Okay. That won't have any negative impact on anything we do tonight, right?
No.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, or I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
7C.
Mr. Mayor, 7C is an amendment to our agreement with the Orange County Sheriff's Department to provide forensic services, and Kevin Rainey is here to give a brief staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. The purpose of the staff report is to obtain your permission for the police department to renew the contract with the Orange County Sheriff's Department for our forensic services. The police department has contracted with the Orange County Sheriff's Forensics Unit since 1996. Currently, the contract provides for one senior forensic specialist housed at the Garden Grove Police Department who performs and coordinates all physical, latent, and serological evidence with the Orange County Crime Lab, and also one lead forensic specialist assigned to the Garden Grove Police Department casework who is housed at the Orange County Crime Lab. The contract also specifies all forensic materials and supplies are provided by the county. The contract pays for 40 hours per week for the senior forensic specialist and seven-day-a-week coverage from the lead forensic specialist and up to an additional 240 hours of overtime. Our current contract expires June 30 of 2008. This new contract represents just over a 6% increase, which is the increase in labor costs for the upcoming year. The recommendation is that city council, I'm sorry, the proposed contract is also an ongoing cost and is included in the 2008-2009 budget, and I recommend that city council approve the contract amendment with the Orange County Sheriff's Department to provide forensic services to the city of Garden Grove. That concludes the staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
What did you say the price increase was? What percentage?
Just a little over 6%.
And what's that tied to?
That's tied to the contractual labor raise that the employees that we're paying for will receive next year.
Okay. That makes 3.92 look pretty good.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
That contractual raise, is that the sheriff's raise or the city's raise?
They're sheriff's employees, the forensic specialists who work for the county.
So they control that, not our city?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Move approval.
Second. Do you know if there's a new sheriff?
Not until next week, perhaps.
Oh, they didn't pick one today?
Not that I'm aware of.
Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
7D.
Mr. Mayor, 7D is an amendment to an agreement with Northrop Grumman for hardware support and software support in relation to our police community dispatch system. And Rebecca Mix will give the report on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Garden Grove Police Department is here this evening to seek city council approval to amend the current computer-aided dispatch system, or CAD, hardware agreement and increase the compensation amount, and to renew the CAD software agreement, both with Northrop Grumman. The police department's CAD system was purchased and installed in 1999. The original warranties expired in 2002, and the police department has continued to receive maintenance and support by Northrop Grumman through contracted services. Last October, the city council approved a hardware upgrade for the CAD, and this amended hardware maintenance agreement will cover any hardware issues that may arise between now and the full implementation of the CAD upgrade, which should be completed by the end of this year. The CAD hardware upgrade brings with it the expectation that the CAD's life will be extended approximately five more years. Therefore, it is necessary to renew the software maintenance contract for the CAD system to keep it functioning at an optimal level for the rest of its anticipated life. The CAD is the backbone of the communication system used to deliver police dispatch services to the community. The Communications Division annually allocates funds for the CAD's maintenance contracts, and there will be no additional impact on the city's general fund. It is recommended that city council approve the amendment to the professional services agreement with Northrop Grumman for hardware support and increase the compensation to $71,456.34, approve the professional services agreement with Northrop Grumman for software support not to exceed $453,925.76, and authorize the city manager to sign and execute the agreements, including making any modifications or signing any implementation agreements as necessary during the contract period for the operation and implementation of the contract services. This concludes the staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Yes, Ms. Wayne?
Yes. This amount, 525,382.10, is that for five years?
That is for five years for software support. Actually, $453,925 is five years. That's actually the two contracts together.
Together.
The $71,000 covers from last October, I'm sorry, last July through this December. So July 2007 through December 2008.
Do you have the amount of the contract for the last contract?
I don't have that with me, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Mr. Mayor, 7E is the initiation of proceedings for the Main Street Assessment District, and I'd like Ron Meisler to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on April 8, 2008, the council adopted a resolution 8814-8, which directed the engineer to prepare the required report under the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. You have before you the engineer's report that outlines the improvements and maintenance costs for the upcoming fiscal year of 2008, 2009 for the Main Street Assessment District Number One. The engineer's report, along with the attached resolution, is the next step towards the levying and collection of the assessment from the property owners. Therefore, tonight, the staff recommends that the city council approve the engineer's report for the Main Street Assessment District Number One, adopt the attached resolution, which will meet the requirements under the Landscape Lighting Act of 1972 to declare the intention to levy and collect an assessment for the maintenance for the fiscal year 2008-2009, and set a protest hearing regarding the assessment for June 24, 2008. This concludes my staff report and available for answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll move it.
Have a motion. Second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
7F.
7F is the initiation of an underground utility district, number 24, over on Hazard Avenue, and Keith Jones is here to describe this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, staff is preparing to construct the Hazard Avenue-Yuclet Street intersection improvements, which consist of widening the northern side of Hazard Avenue west of Yuclet Street. As part of this project, we're recommending that we underground six utility poles that carry Edison and telephone wires and cable television lines. As part of this, a public hearing is required to initiate the district process as well as notification of affected property owners. The estimated cost of the underground is approximately $500,000. And so it's recommended that the city council adopt the attached resolution calling for a public hearing to be held on June 10, 2008, initiate underground utility district number 24. Complete staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Move approval.
Oh, second.
Motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Number eight.
Eight, A, is ordinance for second reading, and that's ordinance number 2725, an ordinance of the city council, City of Garden Grove, adopting amendment to a development agreement between the Orange County Vector Control and the City of Garden Grove.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of the second reading?
Second.
Have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, Ms. Rosen.
Well, I want to thank everybody who sent me condolences on the passing of my father, which was why I missed the last meeting, and I do appreciate that. Since I wasn't here, I didn't get a chance to participate in the first discussion about the grand jury report about fireworks, and we passed an ordinance last year when we increased the penalties, and we said we would bring it back after the Fourth of July this year. The Fourth of July is on a Friday, and we'll see how effective the ordinance is when the Fourth of July falls on a three-day weekend, and I think we'll still do that. I thought, I read the whole grand jury report, I thought it was biased in that it gave all the reasons why they would be opposed to fireworks, but none of the reasons in favor of fireworks. And I was particularly interested when they talked about actions where city councils had abolished fireworks. They left off the recent experience of the city of Buena Park, where the city council actually banned fireworks, and the voters initiated a referendum and overturned the city council by a two-to-one vote. Twice as many of the voters voted to reinstate fireworks as voted to abolish them, and I think that's the trend. I think that would happen in our city if we ever did try to abolish fireworks or put it on the ballot. I think the voters would overwhelmingly favor fireworks. I think there are a tremendous number of families in our city who enjoy the Fourth of July and being able to set off fireworks in their own communities, legal fireworks in their own communities, families get together, and all of that was ignored by the grand jury. And so, you know, grand juries are great, they have the authority to investigate things that no other governmental body can, but I think they missed the boat on this one.
Ms. Wayne.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on, a few meetings ago, I asked Matt to check into Orange, City of Orange Business Assistant Program, so...
Right, I thought we gave you a report, but I'll double-check. We did look into that some time ago.
Oh, okay, you did a written one?
I think we did, but I'll see if we made sure we got.
Okay.
Yeah, we did investigate that, but I'll make sure you have that.
Thank you. And I wanted to commend the Strawberry Festival organizers. They did a good job this year. I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed passing out the strawberry shortcakes to all the citizens. Noticed some of the people went in line three times. We didn't get a good turnout because it's kind of sprinkly, and so we had a lot of cakes left that went, I heard, that went to the different agencies and maybe nursing homes and senior homes. That's, that's good. And, okay, I like to, well, the only thing though is I'd like to congratulate Mr. Broadwater and his wife, and Steve Jones and his wife, on their anniversary. And the last thing is, last weekend was Memorial Weekend. I always like Memorial Weekend. It gives me a whole day just to think of all the people that sacrificed their lives for us, and since we got a holiday, I got to do that and not think about anything else.
Just hope everybody enjoyed the Strawberry Festival this weekend. I know I did, and to, just to concur with what Councilman Rosen said in reading that grand jury report, it was ridiculously biased as it read, and the grand jury lost a little credibility in my eyes about the way they approached that. If you take the time to actually read it, which I did, it's, it's based on fuzzy logic. Regardless of where you're coming from on the issue, just if you, if you read it from a, just a strictly logical standpoint of how they justified what they were trying to justify from the get-go, it didn't make a lot of sense. So, I would agree wholeheartedly on that. We had the ICSC conference out in Las Vegas last week. That was hugely productive, as usual. Our staff packed it full of meeting after meeting, and I'd like to think we made some good progress, particularly with regard to fostering our International Drive West concept along, and I met with a lot of different people, and a lot of great ideas come out of that conference, so that's a, it's a good thing to do. And that's it.
I'd like to wish Steve and Manny, his wife, happy anniversary, and I'd also like to, I'm going to briefly comment, I'm just about finished with my response to the grand jury, so I'll leave it at that, but once it's been mailed off to them, I guess I, I don't know if I have to give them two days before I go public with mine or not, but if that's the case, I certainly will. The second thing is, Mayor Pro Tem Rosen and I were at Magnolia Park, the cemetery on Magnolia between Chapman and Lamson. This is the seventh year they've had an annual service, and they also recreate a little bit of Civil War history. They have 17 veterans of the Civil War that are buried in that cemetery, and they, they did, as they've always done every year, it was a very moving service, and we really enjoyed it. So I hope to see you again in a couple of weeks, so we'll adjourn till the next city council meeting. Huh?
Yes, that's right.
Vote.
Want to remind everyone to vote on June 3, Tuesday, June 3.